Good afternoon, seeing that it is real close to four thirty, I will call the Evansville-Vanderburg Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order on October twenty fifth, four thirty P M. I don't believe we have any visitors today. Seeing none. There's a package of correspondence I'm passing around for everybody to take a look at. I present to you the consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at that. Do I hear a motion for approval? There's a motion in a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Governance. Do we need to wait for Sabrina for that one? We have a quorum.
That is that you're prerogative to do so.
Let's uh, let's skip down to the finance report. I know, and just for the record, one of our other board members was in route from Indy and I spoke to her a few minutes ago, so she was only a few minutes out. So she has an opportunity to speak on those and vote as well. We'll skip ahead to the finance report, Lori.
So in your package, you'll see the monthly report of appropriations as of September twenty twenty three, or September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, and our appropriation balance right now is five million, three hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars, and some change, or the equivalent of thirty-five percent of our balance, and I'll get a little bit more detailed when we discuss the third quarter update. Under the investment report, our investment and balances for the state investment pool of trust Indiana for all four funds, is fourteen million, two hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. Again, this is as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The average daily yield for August was five point three four three nine percent, or up five tenths of a percent since August, and the average daily yield year to date is four point nine one one four, also up a little over five tenths of a percent since August.
Approval bills?
That means, how are you? If you look in your packet, you'll see the report of both payroll and invoices, the invoices for the period of September two thousand twenty-three, total five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-two cents, and the two payrolls for the month of September, total a hun- three hundred and forty-nine thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents for September eighth, and four hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-two cents for September twenty-second. I moved that those be approved by the board.
Second? Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Budget update, third quarter. Back to you, Lori.
So in the packet is additional document, and this includes the revenue for the first three quarters of the year, as well of our expenditures by line item broken out a little bit more detail than what you get on a monthly basis. For the end of the third quarter, I'd like to point out on the revenue side that the percentage of anticipated budget to collect out on the far right column for property taxes is a representation of the deduction of our tax cap or circuit breaker amount, and that's is forty-one percent. So we've collected fifty-nine percent if we're using that estimate. We don't know the total amount until we get our tax settlement in December, but if you used it versus the certified budget or the budget order, the column that says percent of budget to collect twenty twenty-three, that shows that we only collected forty-seven percent of the original certified budget of property taxes, or we had still have fifty-three percent to collect. So there's quite a bit of difference, and that difference is what the tax cap, it's reflex, and that was two million, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars. That may go up, but may go down a little bit. It's been holding pretty steady, maybe goes up a little bit over the past couple of years as a reflection of the net assessed values of the county going up. Utilizing all of our revenues combined that we budget for, and we don't budget for every particular cat line item, but some of those are in categories, so if you look at those that have asterisk beside it, those are the ones that are part of the fees, the service fees, fines and fees, which we don't actually charge fines anymore, since we went fines-free, but those include the copiers, the fax machines. It also includes the print printers that we have for public use, and we budgeted for in that particular category for forty-four thousand dollars. And of that forty-four thousand dollars, we've exceeded that by thirty-nine percent. When you add all of those together. The other that we budget for is what we call manual charges, and that includes a variety of different charges, the ten dollar processing fee, if you turn, if an account is turned over to our collection agency, but the main amount of money, so you can see there, year to date, we've collected fifty-six thousand dollars. Forty-eight thousand of that is passport-related, passport fees, passport photos. Also, we charge for postage on those if they choose to do expedited postage. Then, so we actually record that as revenue, and that's why you'll see it under the expense side, our postage is very low for the first nine months of the year, because postage has gone up, the, all of those different fees expedited overnight, all those have gone up in this past year, as well as just the regular forever stamps. But out of that fifty-six thousand, forty-eight thousand dollars of that I wanted to point out is passport-related, so our passport services are still doing very well, and we have exceeded the original budget of thirty thousand by eighty-seven percent in that particular line. Of course, the market's doing well so far this year in investments, and we're over almost twenty-five hundred percent of what we budgeted for the year. So, any questions about the revenue before I get into the expenditure side?
Do I just have one question? And it's really about passports, more out of curiosity, because last time I did mine, I didn't hear it flawlessly, so I appreciate that. Of those revenues received, that forty-eight thousand, is that, is there costs associated with that, other than our soft costs of employees' time that are doing the work and?
So you pay for, you pay a fee for us to process it, which is the soft cost. And then if you purchase a, if we take your photo and take your photo, then the supplies for that particular, the paper that they're printed on, the photo paper, every once in a while, we have to upgrade or replace the, the camera itself, so those fees would be associated with the photos, and then the actual cost that is associated, if you decide you want to expedite the shipping to the Chicago Passport Agency, then I think it's like up to twenty-nine dollars or something like that now. We collect exactly the amount, and then we pay out that amount. So there's, it's kind of an even, even though it's not reflected because of the way our budgets are set up, governmental.
I think it's a great service, I was just curious.
Do we make any money off of that at all?
Oh, yeah.
A net?
Yeah.
About how much percentage, ten percent, eighty percent?
I would say probably eighty-five to ninety percent is profit. So under the expenditure category or line items, you'll see that those in, that are highlighted, the percentage to percentage remaining of the budget for twenty twenty-three and turquoise, we have been tracking and watching. Those are the, the particular line items that might see a monthly expenditure being charged to that line item. It's not one that we would see having infrequent, maybe like once a year, large lump sum expenditures out of, and those are the ones that are under the twenty-five percent, as if we were taking a one-twelfth approach to expending each of those lines. Pretty basic, there are a couple that have jumped out this year that we weren't anticipating, one being postage, as I mentioned. Office supplies is another, just because the toner cartridges for your printers, the chapter replace all the time, have really skyrocketed. So we tried to take that into account as we set the budget for twenty twenty-four. Other, other things that we have been tracking and that we look at every year is our other e-resources, ebooks, e-audio materials, and then the streaming accounts. We just keep a track of those, so we typically will have to do a transfer of other ebook funds into other e-audio and e-resources and streaming, just to offset, because they typically will go over what we budgeted. And again, we looked at that when we set the twenty twenty-four budget, and we moved some additional funds out of ebooks into the audio materials from the get-go, start of the year, so hopefully.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just say hopefully that will help alleviate some of that next year.
And I, I think I asked this last year, but on the ebooks and that, especially with Hoopla, I know that when it gets down towards the end of the month, Hoopla sends me emails saying, you have this many remaining, and, and I know that, at least I know that for every one I check out on Hoopla, the EPL gets charged. We don't direct their marketing on that, it's Hoopla, right?
Correct.
So I, I just wonder if there's an opportunity there to help. You know, because Hoopla wants me to check out materials, because they can make money. The library might be saying, if you don't want to check out stuff, there's, it's not necessary to keep five items checked out that you're not using, so.
Yeah, and we do watch the cert transaction days, because we know when those come out, and Lisa Holstein, before she left us for retirement, would watch that very closely, I'm sure.
So does it go up whenever?
It doesn't go up significantly, it goes up a little bit, obviously, there are some people that adhere to it, but it doesn't go up drastically. So, but our electronic resources selector is watching that as well.
Every time I check a book out on Hoopla, I'm always afraid that Lori's gonna call me and like, you know how much money you're charging?
I can't see what you check out, so.
You're gonna get your own line item.
I had one question, and it seems like we discussed this, but I do not recall the details, the local history maintenance that is in deficit.
So this particular year, the reason it's in deficit is because we had the news bank archives that we had scanned, and then we, this, this includes a platform, annual platform.
Got it.
So when you go into our database section, and you look at the archive newsprint from, what was it, eighteen ninety-one to night, or two thousand, and whatever that date was, anytime we have hosted that on our website, we have to pay what they call platform fee.
Got it.
We didn't get billed in twenty twenty-two.
So it's kind.
And it came in like in May, and so we've paid twice this year on that particular, and that is about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So that won't happen again?
Just kind of an anomaly.
Yeah. The one other area that I would like to point out that I have a little bit of concern about, and that is in our property and liability insurance. About three quarters of the way down on the second page of your document, we are over this year by three thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars, and we have not paid the premium for our workers' comp yet. There's a couple things, factors that play into why this is over, and why I have concern about it. One is when we get quotes and when we get quotes for the following year, we get them at the time of renewal, or as we're putting together next year's budget, but that's actually what we get charged for the current year. So it is kind of an anomaly, you try to, I won't say pad, but anticipate what kind of increase you're gonna see in those particular coverages and policies, but you can't always tell that. And so, so we have some challenges there. It continues to go up, cyber risk is, is going up tremendously high, but we need that because of state law now, and then there's some other factors, like our workers' comp will go up because our salary dollars have gone up as well. So, one of the things I would like to do is bring in an insurance group to assess our coverage and risk areas. After the first of the year, I'm gonna look at it right this second. And see where, where we could benefit by where we're not covered, where we might be over-covered, and look, really look at our policies and see what we truly need moving forward, and then we can get a better idea of what those premiums might look like. I'd really like to use a, as insurance group that has library service experience, especially of our size. We have been approached, and I'm not proposing, we use as, I'm just putting this out there to think about, because they have offered to come and do a presentation as well. The Gibson Insurance Group from Fort Wayne, who worked with Saint Joe County up in South Bend, their public library director has highly recommended them, came in, showed them where their coverage was lacking, showed them where their risk was, and actually saved them some money in the long run as well. It's a free service for them to do the assessment, but the intent is that you go with them and make them your insurance agent of record when it's all said and done. If we had them in particular come in and do the assessment, we would sign an N D A, so we couldn't take their information and then give it to our current broker, our current insurance rep, and say, hey, this is what we, we're told, now could you fix this for us? Our current group is Epic Midwest, which used to be Old National Insurance, and they've done a great job of every year going out and marketing and getting quotes to make sure we have the best services, or you know, best coverage and the best cost as well. They've been great about doing that year in and year out, but I think we need to take a little deeper dive look into that, and I don't, I need to do some research too, and see who all around here does that. That was just one person that reached out to us. But see what we can come up with, and I'd like to try to bring that back to the board after the first of the year. After we wrap up your end, and see where, what we can find out, what we can do to help offset maybe some of these increased premiums on some of our insurance, if they're necessary, like we have S excess earthquake insurance here in Evansville. Do we need as much as we have, because we pay extra premium for that? So those are the type of things that I would like to kind of sit, sit down with insurance group and look at, and see what we need, what we don't need, and then where we end up from that point moving forward, so.
When's the last time we bid out insurance or had them reviewed by some outside entity?
So it's been it was before COVID. That creates another challenge, because once you have put out a request to a carrier any insurance company, no other insurance company can go to that same carrier. They will only quote with one carrier. So Epic goes to, we currently have Selective. So no other insurance company in town could go to Selective and ask them to give them a quote, or give them a package deal. Because it's already, so each time we have put it out as an R F P or out for bid, then we get all these other insurance company, insurance carriers for the different types of policies that we have, and then it's like comparing apples and oranges, there's no true way to compare this apples and apples and oranges and oranges. So then we end up looking at what looks like the best deal. If we went with one particular, if we would designate who our intro of record would be, whether we continue with Epic or we change that, then they can go out and do everybody's.
I was gonna say, isn't?
They can do Cincinnati, yeah, they can do Cincinnati, they can do selective job.
They can work in the global market.
Yes, they can. What I need to see is if they have the ability to go in and assess our risk, because what they've been doing is just renewing what we have.
Sending your current.
And just looking for, yeah, the best price.
Do you know what the total value of property that library has is just?
I can't tell you exactly, but for some reason, forty-eight million sticking out in my head. And that could be from way, way back.
And property and casualty is getting ready to go up significantly.
We have, we have been very lucky, like I said, Epic has done a great job in marketing and shopping for us. So if there's somebody who provides the same exact coverage, it'll, that a less premium or lower premium, then they have recommended that, and if they come in, their current carriers come in with a exorbitant increase from year to year, they will work with them to see if they can't negotiate a lower premium in that particular.
Deductibles.
Yeah, exactly. That makes sense. So, so it's just something I would like to look at after the first of the year, and like I said, we had one group on that offered to do a free assessment, I'd like to see feathers in our area do that as well, so. So when I bring it back, you'll be aware.
I think the board would welcome your recommendation.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, let's try to do other business real quick. Nominating committee, I need to appoint a nominating committee for the selection of officers for next year. I, I think I've talked to a lot of folks, but I'll just see if there's anybody interested in this group that wants to serve on a nominating committee.
If you need someone else, I'd be happy to.
So.
I think I've said that if you need someone, but as far as somebody jumping up wanting to do it.
No, this is the nominating committee. So Bob? Are you three nominating committee?
I'm good.
All right. I'll let you do the nominating for the next meeting, I guess we have to do that by forty days. Really have to do it until.
It is fifty days before
the January.
The elections. The nomination slate has to be presented, so.
You have to look at when that January meeting is and kind of.
Yep.
No, this nominating committee has to be fifty days before, I think it's twenty-five days.
Before the slate of officers.
Okay, the slate of officers, I'll clarify.
Okay, it shouldn't take too long. And I know from past experience, Valinda has a great process for this.
Thank you for the vote of confidence.
That's better than the Magic Ball. Okay, nominating committee, complete. Holiday and library closure schedules, I saw those.
And Lisa cannot be with us today, so Jamie has stepped up to the plate to take care of this for the H R department.
I was gonna pretend I was Lisa.
Okay.
All right, so in your packet, you have your, oh, I'm Jamie Sills, the assistant H R manager, so I work right with Lisa, which is why I get to do this, so. So in your board packet, you'll have the holiday library closures for twenty twenty-four. On the back of that is the list of holidays, couple things I do wanna, well, the one thing I want to point out is as previously approved at the September fourteenth meeting, the library will close the day for the eclipse in twenty twenty-four, but we will be open for President's Day as a trade-off for that closure, but everything else is pretty well standard. So we are asking the board's approval for the holiday and library closures scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve. Motion, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Not really, this is really just a comment. At Monday's board meeting, the Evansville-Vanderburg School Corporation agreed that it would be, that students would not be in session for the eclipse day as well.
Other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Recommendation from Building and Grounds Committee. That shouldn't have been on there, should it?
No, I think it should, I just don't know why it's not listed on board book, yeah. The document, not me.
Well-crafted.
It was, we worked so hard on it.
This the, the well-crafted?
That's the well-crafted.
All right, so I will just give you the recommendation from the Building and Grounds Committee. Upon review of the next potential facilities projects, is recommendation of the Building and Grounds Committee that the E V P L Board of Trustees authorized library administration to begin the process of doing due diligence on the following projects. E V P L Stringtown, E V P L Red Bank, E V P L East and West. Due to the similar similarity of the E V P L East and West renovations, those two locations may be paired together as one project, but the other two will be done and bonded individually in time. It should be noted that, that the motion that we would make would not authorize the purchase of land, but it does authorize staff to research and due diligence towards possible land or site acquisition. They can't really do anything to start thinking about what we'll do next without permission from us to give, to say, go do what you need to do to come back to us.
So they can't think to each other and do?
Kinda, okay, no, they can think, they just can't tell us what to talk. So that's in the form of a motion from one of our standing committees, so I'd need a second. There's a second, any discussion? Hearing none?
We have a timeline till we get something back from this thought process?
So I don't want to speak for the administration, but we didn't really establish a timeline, we just wanted to get the ball rolling, so in case an opportunity would present itself, or there was a reason to move quickly or do something, they had the wheels in motion to do it, but we're not under any significant timeline, we've got a lot going right now, so.
Right.
Yeah, and another question would be, is there any prioritization among the three projects? Are they prioritized as listed?
As listed in the decision matrix, right now, the way it would be would, it's a close between Red Bank or Stringtown, but I think we put Stringtown above Red Bank, just because of the size of the location and the ability to really impact that community much quicker. So it would be probably Stringtown, Red Bank, and then East and West, which have recently had a lot of updates.
Although I would add that part of that prioritization is the availability of property to do that. So if property did become available for Red Bank pretty quickly, it, they still have the authority or the ability to move.
I understand, about there. I have a question, so I just need some clarification. The east and the west, is that the Bayard Park is, is in one of those?
Yes.
Which one is that?
The, so, the east, we, there's a park, Bayard Park beside it, we don't own that property, but we do own a significant amount of property around that library, whereas west, the park is around it, and we don't own any of that land, except our parking lot behind in the building.
But there's renovate, there's a recommendations for renovations at the one in Bayard Park?
Yes.
Think about renovation.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was trying to.
Yes.
They would both be the same, both buildings are the same Carnegie structures, so it would be adding an elevator is the biggest portion of that renovation, and adding on to the back, so you could have easier access.
Okay.
Yep, and A D A compliance.
Any other questions?
You have to whisper into our good ear.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. You're allowed to think and tell us what you thought. All right, now, we will move back towards the governance, and we'll make note that we now have six members of our board present, so. On governance, adoption of the twenty twenty-four Library and Operating Fund, Library and Movement Reserve Fund, Bonded Interest Redemption Fund, Rainy Day Fund, and Special Library Willard Fund budgets. Lori?
So once again, included in your packet is the budget form three, notice to taxpayers, that has been updated with today's, we scheduled a board adoption date of October the twenty-fifth. And that includes the finance statement, the proposed tax rate for each fund, as we shared during the public hearing in, back in September. There were no taxpayer objection petitions received within the seven days of the public hearing. Therefore, with the posting of the notes to taxpayers for the board adoption meeting in accordance with Indiana Code six dash one point one dash seventeen dash three, you'll also find budget form four in your packet, in order in setting the twenty twenty-four appropriation sums for expenditures and for the purpose of raising revenue, the property tax levy and rates for your approval.
Do I hear a motion of approval?
So move.
Second? Motion, second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I, yes, I do have the official form four ready. What you'll need to do is find your name, mark aye, that you voted aye, and then. Uh, what you'll need to do is find your name, mark I that you voted I, and then sign it, and then Sabrina Secretary, I need you to sign twice.
You want to go ahead and do the other one?
Oh, that one's not me.
Jamie again.
Yes.
Or Lisa, whoever you are today.
Yeah, I won't comment on that. Um, so I'm back. Um, all right, so in your packet, you have the twenty twenty-four benefits package. Um, that is renewing the employee benefits and then also the salary um structure that we have in there as well. So for the benefits, most everything is staying the same. Um, a few changes include the increase um for the clinic itself, our wellness clinic that we have. Um, over in the green space, um increasing that due to adding part-time employees earlier this year. And just seeing how all that flowed, we needed to increase that a little bit. Um, and then an increase into the life insurance due to the maximum dollar coverage increasing due to our salary study that we approved in. Um, at the May board meeting that went into effect in June. Um, and then there is medical pricing adjustment um from on court to H S T. Well, that will basically just adjust the pricing for our um medical claims. Um, so on that front page, you can kind of see the carriers um. Anthem, we're in a rate hold until twenty twenty-five, and Anthem has our vision plan. Paramount has our two dental plans, and we're in the second year of a rate hold on that. Um, pretty much everything else is staying the same as far as that goes. Um, so if you turn to the second page of that, um it shows our health insurance rates for twenty twenty-four. And just short description of the plan itself, um kind of detailing how all of that works. And we are continuing within the Pareto captive, um and we're having no payment into that for the ninth consecutive year, which is fantastic. Um, and there's again no change to the medical rates planned for the coming year. Page three is our vision and dental, so there are no vision changes and no dental changes. And um all the rates are staying the same there as well, so no increases to its premiums. Next page is our salary um structure that we had approved, that you guys approved. At the May eleventh board meeting, those salaries took effect on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And we are not increasing any wages in twenty twenty-four because those went in uh mid-year of twenty twenty-three, so those are holding for the year of twenty twenty-four. So our proposal is E V P L is seeking the library board's approval to continue all benefits as stated for the benefit year twenty twenty-four.
Entertained emotion. Motion second?
Second.
In a second. Questions?
And he's all in budget, isn't him in budget, right?
Questions, all those in finger, signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Announcements.
All right, well, first one, I'd like to thank the H R staff and Heather for working on this project. Cause they've done a fantastic job with our health benefits for years, and this year, as you can see, rates are staying. Very much flat, so um or slight increase, so. Um, they've done a tremendous job with that compared to what's going on in the rest of the country with health insurance, so we are really. Doing a great job with that, and it's because of that team. Me personally, I just wanted to mention, we had a great time at Job Spark this week. It was a blast. Working with the eighth graders and telling them about the library with the four individuals I was paired up with, I learned a bunch of new stuff about them and. Um, it was, it was great to be over, hanging out with them for four hours, but most importantly, I'd like Heather to introduce our newest staff member.
So this is Becca Scott. Becca is our new Director of Communications and Community Impact. Uh, she will probably come see you sometime next year and talk about the work that she's doing. Uh, but Becca oversees our outreach team, our programming team, and our marketing team.
Welcome to E V P L.
Thank you.
Any. Brief background, where'd you come from?
Certainly, so the past fifteen years, I've been at Deaconess, and in the past five years, my role was in corporate communications. So I worked extensively with administrative messaging, was on the COVID response team from a communication standpoint. Facilitated large corporate events, but prior to that, I had community engagement roles, I oversaw the resource center. And then before being at Deaconess, I worked at Alexandria Public Library for three years. And so I'm very excited to be back into the library world, and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can serve our community.
Excellent, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Any additional announcements, any announcements from the board?
I will remind you, you have all the stuff, but I'm just gonna hit it again. Dia de los Muertos on November fourth, Saturday, November fourth, it is the same weekend as the foundation book sale. So you can do one and then go to the other, uh but both should be great events, so the book sale is here in the Browning Rooms. And Dia de los Muertos is at E V P L.
Thank you.
I just have.
Yeah.
Uh, first of all, I want, I want to commend the committee for, for these little, uh, there's a really nice. Uh, on my observation, I look, I, you know, and I'm the person that notices. There is uh no diversity as far as uh people of color. I've been going to all the mural candidates forums, and there's like thirteen percent minority in the city of Evansville. We are trying to increase um minorities to come and fill a part. And the first thing you see is what you see, right? And when, when I look at the website, I mean, I brought that to the attention, we need to make that someone. I has to be on marketing.
So I will tell you that we have, so a lot of changes should be coming with Becca, but one of the team members in marketing. Has already looked into and has a list of different sites where we can get, we don't have a ton of our own pictures. We, we try to get more of those over time, but sometimes they're not great quality to print. Um, but we have been looking into different sites where we can buy more stock imagery that does include diversity. So there is already a list probably ready for Becca's approval and has been being worked on in the process, so that should increase very, very soon.
Well, I appreciate that because I've been singing this song for a while, so hopefully I can.
As a matter of fact, I forgot the face was in the room, so let me give credit where credit is due. It's Faith that has a list. And has been working on it um pretty intensely, so.
I appreciate it, look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none, I will call for the adjournment. Need a motion? Okay, we're just gonna adjourn.